This will now be recorded.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Mollyford Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission to Order. The date is July 7th, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Start with Deb.
Deborah Phillips.
Ally McKeen.
Robert Simon.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Passeretti.
Nick.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Aaron O'Hare, environmental planner.
All right, the fact that we have a full slate of commissioners, both regulars and alternates, I want to be sure that the voting members tonight are the regular members. They would be Deb Phillips, Nick Kern, Michael Caruso, Jennifer Passeretti, Riley and me, Jim Vitale. Okay. Going on to the agenda. We have consideration of the minutes. We'll first do the consideration of the regular meeting of May 5th. Any comments regarding the minutes of the meeting of May 5th? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Deborah Phillips, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting on May 5th, 2021, be accepted as submitted.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Motion made, second. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes. Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Jim? Yes. Then we'll go on to the minutes of the special meeting. They were in your packet also. Special meeting held Monday, May 10th, 2021, at 475 Williams Road. Is there any comments regarding the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, could I just make a point of order, point of order? This was inadvertently left off our regular agenda, but an agenda addendum was posted last, yesterday afternoon, and that, so consideration of the special meeting minutes is now on our agenda.
A vote made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? A call for a vote. Deb?
Oh, I didn't make a motion yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application, this minutes.
Deborah Phillips, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the special meeting at 475 Williams Road on May 10th, 2021, be accepted as submitted.
Second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote. Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jim? Yes. Okay. Going into old business is application A 21-3.3, 475 Williams Road. Scott and Sandy Calavero in ground pool. Who's representing them tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. David Carson, one of the principals of the OCC group, representing the applicant. As we discussed on our special meeting at the site walk, we've revised the plan to pull the pool a little further away from the wetlands. As the perimeter of it, the low height wall was staked out in the field, and we also showed you the location of the proposed rain garden. Subsequent to that meeting, the town engineer had asked for computations with regard to the loss of flood storage and the compensatory flood storage provided by the proposed rain garden. What we discovered is that we had failed to revise those numbers when we relocated the pool further from the wetlands. So the loss of flood storage actually decreased from 46 cubic yards to 34 cubic yards, which allowed us to slightly reduce the area of the rain garden from 46 cubic yards to 36. So it still provides a little bit of excess storage, but we were able to reshape it a little bit and reduce the grading impacts. And that information had been forwarded to Aaron, I believe, yesterday.
Okay, commissioners, any comments regarding this application? If not, I'll go to Aaron. Comments, Aaron?
Thank you. I will affirm that it was forwarded to me yesterday, and I had it posted on the website under this meeting. So if anyone wants to look at that, I know I informed the commissioners, but anyone else who's attending wants to look at that. It's posted on the town website for this meeting. Okay, so the environmental planners report went out on Friday in your packet, along with comments from the health department, and of course, the special meeting minutes, which we just approved. So I, in there, well, I think it's pretty straightforward. This is very straightforward application, I think, at this point. I do want the project engineer just to affirm that the health department's requests can be met in terms of distances required. They asked for distances for, from the compensatory flood storage area to the septic field and the well to the pool. I know the well and the pool, that's okay, but if Mr. Carson could talk about the distance between the compensatory flood storage area and the septic field.
Okay, looking to see what is the health requirement finding is required.
Actually, it's not in front of me. It went out of the packet. If someone could help me with that. I left it in the office, but I did, it did go out in the packet.
Well, the only thing that went on the packet that I see is health department comments from the 520 were reviewed by this office and required distances appear to be met by current design, but will need to be affirmed by project engineer.
Yes, I remember measuring them, and it didn't alarm me. But I just wanted.
But now he's. I didn't see any specific distances mentioned in the letter. The distances that are provided meet the state health code requirement.
And now you've made that smaller, Dave, right? So it should be even further away.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, so that should be good. That should be good. So as far as the conditions, suggested conditions of approval, would you like me to read them, Mr. Chairman, or?
Oh, Mr. Carson, are you in agreement with all the suggested conditions of approval?
Yes.
There we are. Any other questions, commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Deborah Phillips. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application 21-3.3, 475 Williams Road, Scott and Sandy Cavalero installation of an inground pool be approved with the conditions of approval noted in the planner's report of May 28, 2021.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion?
Did we do significant activity, Jim?
That'd be a good idea. You're right there, Nick. Okay, we got this motion on board. Let's table the vote on this motion, and this has been really coy, as they say, but entertain a motion to determine the significance of this activity.
Deborah Phillips, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 21-3.3, 475 Williams Road, Scott and Sandy Cavalero installation of inground pool be deemed not a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And, yes. Now, we were, we had the motion, and we're into the discussion on the approval of this. Is there any more discussion on the approval or the, the vote on this motion to approve? It's not? A call for a vote. Deborah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Jim, yes. Okay.
Thank you, commissioners.
All right, going on to the next on the agenda is application A 21-4.2 for a research parkway. Is this yours, Mr. Centeviva?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you're on.
Thank you. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Dennis Centeviva. I'm an attorney with the Centeviva Law Firm, and I represent the owner and applicant. With me tonight is Mike Ott, our project engineer from Summer Hill. He'll be making the majority of the presentation. Mr. Chairman and commissioners, you may recall, we were here last month. We described the parcel itself. It is a 3.2 acre piece of land that abuts six research parkway. We were here in 2018 to obtain approval for that site, and this is just an expansion of the existing development at six research. So it'll be combined into one, one building lot and one use. It should be obtained approvals both from this commission and the planning and zoning commission. The environmental planners report from April 30th, Mr. Chair, described the jurisdiction of this commission based upon the fact that we have new impervious area that exceeds the, your threshold, the most, the most direct water course is, in the vicinity of our site, is the Vernal Pool across Research Parkway over on five Research Parkway, so that we're not within any upland review areas. The proposal, as we say, is to develop the site. I can go through that in a minute, Mr. Chair, as we did last month. It's to expand the automobile storage facility that's at six Research Parkway. The new 6,000 square foot building would be part of the overall development. This new building would not require water sewer, because again, it's just for storage of vehicles. There's no fueling, no repairs, no maintenance, no washing of vehicles on site. That was certainly suggested in the comments back in 2018. They're there again in your water and sewer comments from, I think, yesterday that we received today. So we're fine with all of that, Mr. Chair. There were a couple of comments from Aaron back in her most recent report, I think from Friday, environmental planners report. A couple of conditions relating to erosion, seven control measures and communication with her office. We're fine with those. Should this commission be of a mind to act on the application this evening? With that, I'm going to just turn it over to Mike to just go through the, some of the questions that were left unresolved, or just some confirmation from last meeting. Mike?
Okay, um, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. Just for the record again, I'm Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors in Madison. I think you, Attorney Centeviva has just given you a good overview, I think, of the project. I think you all saw it last time, and if I could, if I may share my screen, I will bring up the plans and I'd like to show you the revisions we've made at Aaron's request in her, in her latest planner's report. So I will, I will try to share my screen right now. Okay. Can the, can the commission see my screen now?
I can see your screen. The lines are light, but.
I will, I will zoom in. I think it'll be, I think it'll be a lot easier. So one of the things, I'll zoom in on this left side of the sheet. Hopefully you can see, hopefully you can read the text here where it says snow storage area. I, I hope you can see that, where my cursor is circling.
Right, I can.
Is that legible for you? Okay, so one of the, one of the things Aaron asked us to do was show a snow, a designated snow storage area on the plans, and we've done that with this, this hatched square here, which is 50 by 50. This is, this will be in a lawn area. It is, it is on the west side of the site, near a store avenue, away from the stormwater management basin and the stormwater sand filter and the drainage outlet from the site. So it's, it's on the opposite side of the site. She also asked us to show a temporary soil stockpile area, which is right below this permanent designated snow storage area, and it's this dark circle. I hope you can see that also. And the call out for it is here, temporary soil stockpile area. The third thing she asked us to do, just I'll, I'll zoom out a little bit here and zoom back in, is we, we plan to utilize the permanent stormwater management basin in the lower right-hand corner of the site as a temporary sediment basin, a fairly common practice. And we have shown these red arrows, if you can see them, I hope you can, are the temporary, temporary diversion ditches that during the construction period would divert runoff, sediment-laid runoff to the temporary sediment trap. There is a detail, I'm sure, I'm sure the commission's familiar with this. I'll, I'll switch sheets here, and I hope, hope you can, I hope you can see that I switched sheets. I know sometimes you have to unshare and share again. But can the commission see the temporary sediment basin outlet detail?
I think so.
So, so this is, this is a temporary sediment basin outlet detail that we've added to the plan. The, the basic idea is to construct a temporary riser outlet. It's a typical design. It's found in the Connecticut Soil and Erosion Sediment Control Guidelines. And we will propose to use a manufactured skimmer. I think you've seen it before. It floats. It rises and falls with the temporary water surface in the, in the temporary sediment basin, and it draws in water from the top of the water surface into the temporary riser outlet, and then, and then out, out through the basin outlet structure. So we've, we've added, again, we've, we've added that temporary sediment basin and its detail and the, in the temporary diversion ditches that would direct sediment-laid and water runoff during the construction period to that basin. Aaron also asked us to add to the site operation and maintenance plan that we had submitted the name of the site owner and address and phone number, and I, hopefully you can see that here also. That was, these revised documents were submitted today. They were posted on the website, and we will be glad to bring paper copies to Aaron tomorrow for, for the record. I think the, the, oh, the last, the one more thing that Aaron asked us to, to take care of was to make sure that there is a emergency spillway for the set, for the permanent stormwater management basin. There is an emergency spillway, the way I do it whenever I have an embankment basin. In other words, this basin will be constructed and filled on the right-hand side. I personally do not like to construct stone riprap lined overflow emergency spillways in the fill section. So I incorporate the emergency spillway into the outlet control structure. And in speaking with Aaron today, I think, I think Aaron believes that the town engineer will ultimately review that as part of the planning and zoning application review. I think that, that takes care of, and Aaron, correct me if I've missed anything, but I think that might take care of the things that you asked us to, to add to the plans and the operation maintenance plan.
Yes, um, to be clear, this hasn't been handed in yet. I haven't seen this. I'm just looking at it as the commission is for the first time tonight. However, it is in front of planning and zoning, and the town engineer will be taking a close look at this, as will the water division. It's in the public drinking water supply watershed. So they'll both be taking a close look at the design, but in concept, it's, it's good. I guess I do have a question, Mike, for, I've never seen a temporary sediment trap or basin, I guess this, you could call this temporary sediment basin, that had an outlet control facility already in there. Is, I mean, that's going to be the permanent one, but you're going to put it in right at the get-go when you dig out your temporary sediment basin.
Correct, correct, Aaron. It's a pretty common, it's a pretty common practice, I think, I believe, that you saw it in the, back in 2018, when we were before you for the first phase of this project, and the Bristol Myers site was, had an application before you at the same time. I think you would find that you saw the same methodology and type of installation in that application. So very simply, what happens is the contractor excavates the permanent, excavates and forms the embankment of the permanent stormwater management basin, puts the permanent outlet control structure in, blocks off all of the ports, and makes one connection, I'll go back to that detail, makes one connection from the, the skimmer to that outlet control structure. And then when the project is, when all the construction is done and all the areas are stabilized, and there's no need for a temporary sediment basin anymore, especially once the site is paved, this temporary outlet structure and this skimmer is removed, and the permanent ports on the outlet control structure are opened back up. So it's a pretty, and they're, they're just, they're just blocked off typically with plywood, actually. And they're sealed, so water can't go through them, and then they just remove those, and the permanent structure is already in place. I, I should also, I'd like to say also that the town engineer has submitted, did some time ago submit review comments, I think, as part of the planning and zoning application that we've made. So she has seen this. She hasn't seen the most revised plans, but she did have comments, and we, and we did, I believe, we have addressed all of her comments also.
All right, and she'll be, she will be looking at these new revised plans. Could you, Mike, could you just, for my benefit, talk about when it's a sediment, a temporary sediment basin, and we get a big storm? How does it work? It goes, so the skimmer keeps functioning in a big storm, or does someone take the skimmer off, or how's that work? With big storms coming?
The skimmer stays, and I didn't, I did not zoom in on this detail, but this, again, this is a, this is a standard temporary sediment basin riser outlet detail that you will find in the Connecticut Soil and Erosion Guidelines. So, so in a, in a big storm, Aaron, when there's high flows, the water goes up underneath this hood and down into the riser pipe and out. That's how, that's how this temporary outlet works.
And then.
I'll go, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It goes from the riser pipe into the outlet control structure that's been closed off pretty much, and then it goes out, and then you've, it hits the silt fence you have on that corner. You have the silt fence wrapping all around your property. So it'll hit, that water hits the silt fence, correct?
Yeah, what it'll, actually, what it would do, Aaron, it would, it would come out this pipe to the, the riprap outlet protection apron and be discharged, just like, just like when the project is all done and a rainfall event happens.
Right, but it's going to be hitting. I'm just concerned about the velocity when it comes out and hits that silt fence.
So, so the, this outlet pipe, if you, and your town engineer will see this, this outlet pipe is, is set to be constructed at a half a percent slope, a very flat slope, in order to reduce the velocity. It's a large diameter pipe. It's a 24-inch pipe. And the outlet protection here is designed to slow down, and it did, in conjunction with a very flat pipe, is, is designed to slow down and take, take the velocity, the energy out of the water, just, just like in the permanent situation when the project is all done and we have a rainfall event. The contractor, of course, you know, in, during construction, you know, is required to monitor the site during and after significant rainfall events, and if this, what we have here is a, the set of control barriers, actually a geosynthetic silt fence backed up by straw bales. It's called, it's called out, here it is.
Is that for the whole site, or the whole site, or just this corner?
The whole site, all, all, all sediment control barrier on this whole site will be what you see here. Geosynthetic silt fence backed up by staked straw bales. And there's, there's details on the drawings for that.
All right, let me move on. Commissioners, call for any questions? About Nick? Any issues, Nick? Concerns?
No, I don't see any, and I think he's got it fenced well for the outlet structure, so that the water will kind of dissipate and do its own thing. I don't think, I don't believe we're going to have a washout.
Okay, Debbie?
No, no question.
Jennifer?
I don't have anything.
Michael?
No question.
Ally?
No question.
Robert?
No questions.
I've got a concern. I, I don't know if you're, if this site will act the same as the Bristol Myers site, but we're all aware of that red sediment that gets into the water that doesn't drop out coming off the Bristol Myers site. Now, we know that over the years Bristol excavated very deeply in the center of that mountain, and that may have generated that sediment coming out. This site, I imagine you'll be doing some excavation, but not to the extent than any of the Bristol Myers site was. But Bristol Myers is, is prepared to have flock logs on hand. But Bristol Myers is, is prepared to have flock logs on hand in case this red sediment gets in the water and it, it won't settle out through your sediment, temporary sediment basin. Um, and I don't think it's fair not to consider this problem going over to Bristol Myers, seeing that Bristol Myers is prepared to handle it once it gets there. Comments on that, Mr. Ott?
Um, I, I don't see why we could not, I, I do remember them providing them in the, in that two thousand eighteen application. I do remember that. And I, I don't see why we could not do the same, Mr. Chairman.
And, and what is that? Is that just having the, the flock logs on hand if needed?
I think, I think the co- I think we would add it to our plans that, that the contractor has to, there's, there's already notes in our erosion and sediment control narrative, pretty standard, that the contractor is required to keep um a stockpile of certain sediment control and erosion control materials on the site. We could add those to that, to those materials and you could, of course, uh, you know, we could add that to the plans and you could, of course, condition uh the approval that they be provided. And Erin, as the environmental planner, could, when she makes her inspections, could ensure that, in fact, they are on site.
Well, I, I think also there was some discussion that water and sewer does not want them, an abundance of them getting into the drinking water supply, but we do know that, that they do. So Erin, I, I think that should be discussed through planning and zoning, uh different issues coming up uh associated with this application.
Yes, also I failed to mention the, or maybe I did earlier, the um water division uh did submit on June first, yes, that yesterday, their comment letter, um which we posted, I guess today or yesterday, and on the, on the town website. It's two-page comments. They're asking for these comments to be made conditions of approval. And I'm just looking at them quickly to see if they mentioned the flock logs. I don't think they do. Um, did, um, Mike, you got a chance to look at all those, all their comments?
Oh, yes, and I, I spoke to Scott Shipman at the Water Department early this morning, right after I received them. Uh, they do not mention the flock logs in, in that memorandum.
Right, but of course we, yeah, that could be introduced at the planning and zoning stage. If you don't wanna make it a condition of approval tonight, Jim.
I, I don't think it's fair because none of the commissioners have seen that letter.
Oh, it was posted, I mean, the, the comments from the water division?
Right.
Yeah, well, maybe they didn't get a chance, but it was posted either today, today or yesterday, yeah.
I think it should go, let's, planning and zoning is gonna have uh digested and put those comments associated with planning and zoning, those conditions, all right?
Okay.
Okay, um, let's see, any other comments? Anybody else have any concerns? If not, then I'll entertain a motion regarding significant activity, Nick.
Mr. Chairman, Deborah Phillips, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-one dash four point two for a research parkway, six research LLC industrial development be deemed not a significant activity.
Motion made, is there a second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Now I'll call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, um, you're, uh, you're in agreement with all the conditions of approval that Erin has submitted in her reports?
But, I am, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay, then we'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Uh Deborah Phillips, uh Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A twenty-one dash four point two for a research parkway, six research LLC industrial development be approved with the uh conditions of approval that are in the planner's report of May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion made, is there a second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Motion made in second, and any other discussion? Call for a vote. Jennifer?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Um, one, can I just ask the project engineer to turn those? We need um uh three copies of everything you presented tonight. So I have it in the file and I can refer to the different departments if you would submit that as soon as possible.
Will do, thank you very much.
Okay, um, we don't have anything specifically for new business. We do have receipt of new applications. Um, I think, Erin, did you wanna discuss those applications or not, Erin?
Well, no, you typically, you know, when we had meetings in the town hall, you would re- everyone would get these listed and you would receive the new applications officially. The commission would receive the new applications, so, and you would name them. So why don't you name them? They're written out, or I can name them, and the commission will receive them tonight. Receive them, meaning that's the formal statutory, meaning the clock starts ticking on these applications tonight.
Well, why, why don't you read them? Because I don't, I don't know if I've got that piece of paper with them on it.
Yeah, well, it was posted today, so, yeah, right, okay. Okay, so the, the two applications that came in late yesterday uh were A twenty-one dash six point one. The address is three fifty-six Christian Street. The applicant is Chosworth Mary Hall and they're planning a sports field complex. This is on the corner of Christian Street and Old Durham Road. Okay, the second application is also from Cho and it's A twenty-one dash six point two. It's, the address is forty-five Hill House Avenue. And this is faculty housing. Right now, the property has one older home on it and they're planning to keep the older home and uh build seven uh other houses there for faculty housing.
Okay, all right, they'll be on the agenda next month. And you see any reason why we won't be back in the town hall next month for our meeting?
I'm told it will be happening. I'm told that will be the case. We will be in the auditorium.
Very good. Okay, knowing reports of unit payments and violations. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm a little interested in the Farm Hill Detention Basin before. What's the status of that?
I have heard nothing new since about two months ago, so, but I can, um, I can inquire.
Well, that's, that's, no, I. Okay, so if we go on to violations, um, our famous one, uh twelve forty-five Old Colony Road, Pontiac River. Anything going on with that?
Um, not yet.
Okay, uh, so the, the uh nine fifty South Colony Car Wash Facility?
That falls in the same category.
I, what are we holding that one up for?
Uh, they were asked to um do some work on the filled slope where they filled to clear away dirt for some trees, to save about fifteen trees there. And then they have to go to planning and zoning for the flood permit. Which they have not done yet, I don't.
We hold the trees, move the trees alone, so they, they would do more damage trying to clear around the trees.
Well, it's not. Uh, it's not in front of me, but I will revisit that and go out to the car wash and see if they've done. It was minor work. We didn't ask them to use equipment. This was more handwork.
Okay. All right, uh, A, application A twenty-two point one, twelve and sixteen Northfield Road over clearing floodplains?
All right, that's kinda got, that site has kinda gone idle and we haven't required anything to, you know, meaning planting's back in the floodplain, there's no erosion, I've been out there, that's the good news, it's not eroding. Um, and I don't know if the commission would wanna require.
Well, we ought to decide if it stays on as a violation or not. That's the only thing I, I say.
You know what? I think I'll go out there and see if it's naturally revegetating.
Can you notice a violation, Level, eleven Trumble Drive, Jill Corbin?
Yeah, uh Cobra and Jill, I think she's on, I think I saw her before.
I did.
Oh, there she is, yes, she's on. Uh, the owner of eleven Trumbles on.
I do, but Erin, where do we stand with this?
Okay, so I spoke with, Jill has, has retained a contractor, Northeast Landscaping. And I talked with both Jill and the contractor today. And they are in the process, they first, their first step is they have to get an excavation permit from the engineering department. And that gives them permission to go on to the town land and do the work. The excavation permit requires a certain licensing, a certain bonding, so there's these steps you gotta go through and they're hung up on the insurance, but they're about to get that. And they said the erosion control might be in by Friday with any luck. They've done call before you dig, so it's in motion.
Okay, uh Jill, would you like to speak?
That's, it's in motion, uh handling it as fast as we can with uh the allowance for the permitting for weather and contractor availability with permitting.
Okay, all right, uh notice of violation fourteen sixty-eight Tuttle Avenue. And Courtney Kowalski.
All right, this went out, this letter, what I'd like you to do tonight, commission, is affirm the notice of violation letter that went out. It went out in the packet. Um, actually, I think it went out in the previous packet. Not this month, the month before, if I, somebody correct me, but I think that's, it went out the month before. Uh, so what's going on? What's going on with this? I'm sorry?
I just got mine on Saturday or Friday.
And was it in there, in your packet, this one?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, so it did go out in this, this go around, all right, um. So this is interesting. I get with the stimulus money that's going out and people not going to restaurants. People have a little bit of discretionary income and we get a tremendous amount of pools. I, the pools, the pool referrals come through building department to me, I'm, I probably approve five or seven a week. I mean, there's a lot, above ground and in-ground. So this address came around for a pool. And I saw that it was by, on the edge of Fresh Meadow Swamp. Now, most of us in the commission lived through that giant violation on Fresh Meadow Swamp about five years ago on Tuttle Avenue. So of course, I go out there to say, okay, what's going on? And yeah, it, this property includes a little bit of Fresh Meadow Swamp in the back. And they've done some unpermitted work in the swamp, taken down, as like you might have seen in the photographs I touched, cut down a fair amount of um mature trees growing in the swamp, put a fence in the water, in the swamp, and they want the pool. So anyway, so they're cooperating with me. Um, they got David Lord, I said in the notice of violation letter, said you gotta go out and get a soil scientist to flag the wetland, so I know where we're, what we're dealing with here. Uh, he has done that, but he, we're there waiting for his report. And when they get his report, I'm gonna go out there with the report, look at the flags, also look at their pool application. Because they want to, they wanna go forward with their pool, but of course, we gotta deal with the violation and maybe we can see how it all works out. So that's what's going on with that.
Okay, now the next one is ninety Mansion Road, but you have possible violation there. So I'll leave that aside for the moment and uh I think looking for a motion to uh affirm that the first five items on the violation notices are violations and we will reclaim them as violations. Is the motion to that?
Thank you. Um, Deborah Phillips, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to affirm the violations one through five on the agenda for today, that remain in, in effect.
Second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Jennifer?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes. Now ninety Mansion Road, Ron Hanson Jr. and Courtney Hanson, Aaron?
Yes, yes. Um, this one came from an anonymous complaint, which we do take, we take anonymous complaints of work and I was, so I drove by and I saw, again, you got the notice, the, the letter. This is just a notice that you might have a violation letter. This is not an, an official certified letter. So that there's work being done involving a drainageway stream. I saw the water running from the edge of the road. Anyway, so I wrote them, the owners a letter saying, I'd like to get permission to walk on the property. This is a big property. So it's always good with a big property if you have the owner direct you around and see, orient you and what, what's going on. Anyway, the, uh, the letter was not responded to and it turns out the reason they did not respond was they weren't being forwarded their mail. They were living in Chester at the time. They, so I reissued the letter because they bought property, another piece of property in um, in Wallingford on Bray Court. So uh they did get the letter and today, Mr. Hanson walked in to the office and I sat down with him and we actually talked for two hours. There's a lot going on on this property. Um, he is, he is interested in perhaps looking at conservation easement on this property. He, he is a, a agr- has a lot of varied agricultural interests. He raises chickens, he has planted over a hundred American chestnut trees. He's involved with the American Chestnut Association. They promote trying to get our, our wonderful chestnut trees back that were lost at the turn of the century. So um, he's done all this work and he has more work, more plans in the hopper. And this property turns out has like four or five ponds, it has a dam on it, lots of streams. There's a lot going on and I said, okay, hold up. This is, a lot of this land is, a lot of these activities will fall under the purview of the Wetland Commission. So we've gotta just take a deep breath, what's going on? We've gotta sort this all out and um, you know, see what, see what we, I also gave him some uh references to the Southwest Conservation District and RCS, different organizations that can help people restore an old farm property, help people restore ponds. Because all these are great, but it, you know, involves uh some technical advice, involves money and uh planning and of course, wetland permitting and erosion controls. So that's as far as I've gotten.
So you'll report back to us after you spend another couple hours out there reviewing.
Yes, the owner's gonna walk, walk the site and, and we'll get a little more information that way.
Good. Okay, commissioners, anything else to come before us tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh Deborah Phillips, uh Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Michael Caruso, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? I?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, gang, very good. Next month in the town hall. Thank you.